So I'd like to open the meeting. The Woodbury Select Board meeting for March 14th, 2022.
6:06.
6:06 PM is the start time for the meeting. So we'll start with an open meeting. Are there any questions or comments?
Adjustments.
Adjustments to the Select Board agenda?
Do you have a comment?
General public comments?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
General public comments? Hearing none. We'll approve the bills from the town which have been signed. Which have been signed by the elected Select Board. And approval of minutes from the 2/28 meeting, which will be done by signature. Hearing no other comments, we'll move on to the Select Board governance agenda, which is to choose officers for the agenda. We have two new Select Board members. And those Select Board members are eligible to be Chair of the Select Board. I would nominate Peter Pelz.
Second.
So there's a nomination and a second for Peter Pelz to be Chair of the Select Board. Do I hear any comment? Hearing no comment, we'll take a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Peter Pelz is the new Chair of the Select Board.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's in one of your position.
I'd like to nominate Chris to be the Vice Chair.
Second.
You want to, what, want to take over from here and call for a vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any other positions?
Clerk.
Clerk. Want to nominate?
You can nominate me.
I nominate Diana as clerk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here we go.
We're official. So we are designating now newspapers for the record, for legal notices. What's the history been?
Well, I think it's always been a Hardwick Gazette. But since they're not publishing now, I heard somebody from Hardwick say that they're doing both the Hardwick Gazette and the Times Argus just to be covered. So there's something in paper and something local. So, I mean, there are times when we had to go further. If we're looking for road crew members or something, we might go to Mooresville or St. Johnsbury for, but for just legal notices of meetings and such, I think.
We tend to use, use the Gazette as best we can.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
We've been using the World also.
Yeah, the World's okay too. But it's not very, it's, yeah. People look for official notices in the regular newspapers.
Can I just comment on that? When we were doing the town plan, we were compelled to hold two public meetings. And Robin and I started with trying to advertise in the Times Argus. And they proved very unreliable. We had to warn the meetings 15 days prior to those being held. So they didn't follow through with their promise. So we had to do a second meeting. And we warned those second meetings in the World and also seven days. Those are publications that are in town. And they're paper and they're not electronic. And we were criticized by some members of the public because the Gazette now being published only electronically, some folks didn't have access to them. So we decided to go with paper, which would be, in this case, seven days. And yes, the World.
You know that seven days was $300, right?
Well, it met the stipulations of the open meeting law. So that was $700 well spent, or $300, whatever it was, well spent. At least in my opinion.
So the Gazette, yes or no?
I think the Gazette and the Times Argus. I think the problems with the Times Argus have been ironed out. You both, you got those notices for the Board of Adjustment meeting.
I send it to their sales department. And then I have a supervisor that I also send it to down there and she makes sure that it gets in for me.
And the Gazette, if you get something there on Monday, maybe Tuesday morning they'll still publish it that week if it's urgent.
So we're nixing the World then and using the Times Argus instead?
I think we should still use the World, in my personal opinion.
For about three places or?
That would be four with seven days.
Three.
No, we're not going to do seven days.
We're not going to do seven days.
Oh, good.
I don't think people look at seven days for notices.
For that kind of notice.
And you don't get them that easily around here anyway. Okay. The World, Times Argus, and the Gazette.
The Gazette.
Does that have to be moved or we just?
No, we can make that designation, as far as I understand.
Okay. So we're done with that? So rules of procedure. I've done some research on that. And Robert's Rules of Order are very strict. And I can read just some experts excerpts about it. Except for meetings that provide for public comment, there can be no discussion of any item on the agenda, nor can there be any action on any item not on the agenda. The public comment section allows public to talk about anything and the council may question them, but no further action or discussion is allowed. I've spoken to, a friend of mine is a Select Board member up in Charleston. And they run it very strictly. There is no, no interplay between the audience, the people that are here or participating, and the Board until the business is done. There's can be opening comments and then closing comments if necessary. So then I called the Vermont League of Cities, the towns. And they have sort of a softer, and I'm just going to read this because I think, I think this seems to be more amenable. All meetings of a body are meetings in public, not of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the body so long as order is maintained according to these rules. At the beginning, and then, as was, beginning of and end of a conclusion of discussion of each agenda item. But before any action is taken by the public body at each meeting, there may be, and then designated number of minutes afforded for open public comment. By, by an 2/3 majority vote, the body may increase the time for open public comment and its place on the agenda. Comment by the public or members of the body must be addressed to the Chair or to the body as a whole and not to any individual member of the body or public. Members of the public must be acknowledged by the Chair before speaking. If a member of the public has already spoken on a topic, he or she may not be recognized again until others have first been given the opportunity to comment. Order and decorum shall be observed by all persons present at the meeting. Neither members of the body nor members of the public shall delay or interrupt the proceedings of the, or the peace of the meeting, or interrupt or disturb any member while speaking. Members of the body and members of the public are prohibited from making personal, impertinent, threatening, or profane remarks. Members of the body and members of the public shall obey the orders of the Chair or other presiding member. The Chair should adhere to the following process to restore order and decorum of a meeting, but may bypass any or all steps when he or she determines in his or her sole discretion that deviation from the process is warranted. Call the meeting to order, remind the members of the applicable rules of procedure, declare a recess or table the issue adjourn the meeting until a time and date certain. Order the constable to remove disorderly persons from the meeting. So you get the sort of full spectrum. But I, I think this is, is, you know, it's fairly flexible in terms of how we're running meetings. And I'd like to hear comments or from other Board members or the attendees, what their thoughts might be. What this is just trying to do is create more ordered, order in terms of how we're interacting with the people that are here and the Board's, you know, actions that have to be taken relative to the agenda.
No, I think order is good. But I also think there should be an opportunity for discussions.
Well, that's, this certainly allows for that.
Okay, good. During the, during the agenda item?
Yes.
Not just during?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Chris?
I feel like we should have as much transparency and ability to speak with the townspeople who are here and present and who are available to us remotely in orderly fashion. That sounds fine. But as long as that is still going to be part of our regular decorum.
That will become our regular decorum.
It's all right.
Should be, should this be moved or? And that's the name of the attorney.
It's, it's, it's following Robert's rules.
No, it isn't.
It's following a version of Robert's rules.
It is.
Yep. It's a slight modification from Robert's rules. It's actually a little bit more flexible.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
I just, I'm troubled by the part about a person can only speak once.
No, they can only, and then if any other people.
After the other people. So what would we call this if we adopted it? Adopted rules of procedure modified?
It would be a modified rules of procedure for the town of Woodbury.
Modified from Robert's Rules of Order?
As recommended by the, you think that's necessary? No? Just?
Oh, it would be, yeah, I just wondered what we would say if we were making a motion.
Well, you could just say, adopt a Robert's Rules amended as recommended by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So moved.
Second.
Adopting.
Wait a minute, is there any, anybody have any comments or questions?
After the second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, now we're on to business.
So town clerks report, please.
Overall, town meeting was nice and smooth. Long day, but nice and smooth.
Which meeting are we referring to?
The town town meeting.
How many voters did we get?
229. Out of 732.
Okay. And how many absentee ballots were not returned? Were there a lot?
There was quite a few, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So between lock-ins and ballots that were returned, it was 229 total, huh?
Correct.
And the people in Hardwick were happy when they got their backs from you late at night?
Yes. And I got up there around 11:30.
Yeah, geez.
They were happy.
Yeah, I don't think they added them up till the next day, frankly. But that's okay.
And we have been getting in the overweight permits. So between you three Select Board members, you're going to have to determine who is going to approve these for us.
Is that up to personally being overweight or?
No, no contest there.
This is for the trucks.
Oh, the trucks, yeah.
That's a person. I'm a little heavy.
We have a mother of a here right now.
So these are for when, when trucks go on our roads, not even counting mud season because they can't go on during mud season.
Like your bomb trucks and your propane, your fuel trucks.
Granite?
The granite trucks.
Granite, certainly, yeah. Garbage, some of the garbage do, some don't.
Swans?
No, I don't think I've ever seen one for swans. But yes, they should be. They might not be at the end of the day, but at the beginning of the day, they might be.
Can you read off the ones that have been approved?
The ones that are waiting to be approved? It's an R.K. Miles?
Yep, that's it.
Lumber company.
That's the lumber company.
Dead River?
That's fuel.
Rock of Ages went to granite. Pike? Cardinal?
Okay.
Yep. Chuck, do you know Cardinal?
Cardinal Logistics?
No, I don't.
Does it say what they do?
They have three tractors, two state trucks, and three flatbeds.
So they must be just a trucking company that moves?
Or they could be granite.
They move granite.
They must move granite. Yeah, they're one of the subs.
They're one of the subcontractors. Yes, sir.
Jack Kors Fuel, Scott Brown Trucking, Minosh, Structure Wood Corporation, and McCullough Crushing.
McCullough?
Thank you, Michael.
Michael, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for all your help, sir.
We're not firing you. We didn't get to your spot yet. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael.
So do we have, we going to move to approve?
We need to assign somebody to come in the opposite side of the bottom of the.
Yeah, we have to.
They can't do it right here?
Yeah.
No, they come in every few a week. They come in sporadically during the spring.
Send an email and have one of you come in, whoever wants to sign them, or, yeah, instead of holding, retaining them for two weeks.
I will be the designee if I'm approved.
Sure.
So moved.
What time do you have to go to work in the morning?
Seven.
Seven?
Yep.
Okay, well.
But I can open up the town office.
Oh.
Okay, and she leaves them right in the top, the top red folder on the wall there. Great.
Okay.
And they all have special little designations that we put on there about the times of day when trucks can't come down the Cabot Road and the fact that they need to have chains in the winter. Two little stickers that we put on there.
Do you mind if I take a minute?
Yeah, you're fine.
Yes, you're fine, Chris.
Robin said you were fine.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anything else, Robin?
There is also a letter here concerning Mike McGlin and the junk cars. And I noticed there's a sticky on the top that said email to Select Board members.
What's the date on that?
I can't make up my mind if it is 3/18/21. It must be, it just needs to March 15/2021.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's the letter from Steve Craddock?
That was the Steve Craddock letter.
Yes.
Oh, so that's just.
So that can just be filed in Michael's power of office.
If you have a folder on Edgeworth Road?
Yep.
That's, that's where that goes, okay.
We're not going to go through that again, Ellen?
No, we will.
No, but I mean, right now, we are now.
Thank you.
And I have sent an email out to the people that got elected to come in and sign their oath of office. And I'm still waiting for some of them. So I will send a reminder email out. And other than that, it's recordings.
Thank you, Mrs. Jerky. All right, so.
Yeah, that's all right. Town Treasurers report.
Yep. Over the past two weeks, payroll expenses of $10,647.58. AP accounts payable, bills $9,835.20. Income for cash receipts, taking in for fleet overweight permits, records restoration, copies, fire department insurance, land recording, prepaid taxes, and vault fees totaling $5,869.64. I have packed away the beginning, last year's fiscal year that was audited and approved at town meeting. And I have organized so that the auditors can start going through the first six months of this fiscal year for auditing. The other thing is now that the town approved for an outside audit, I am going to get in the works. Yes, it's going to be paid out of next fiscal year, but I can still prepare and give them to see possibly they'll start working on it before, and then I cut the check after July 1.
Have they been notified that it was approved and they can put us on their work schedule?
No.
Who does, who's going to do that?
I will.
Okay.
Who's, who's the work?
The Sullivan and Powers, I think, got the bid. They submitted a bid.
We approved that bid.
And it was voted on at the town meeting. That was the $23,000.
Right.
But they didn't know they were going to get the work until we got the money approved, so.
Correct.
Which.
So either you or John, either you or John Reed should probably, probably you should contact them.
Yeah, it would be.
It'd be great if you were the point person on that.
I don't know what our auditors are planning on touching before the outside audit. I'll leave that up to them.
Probably don't have any.
So, but yeah, I'll get in touch with John. And if he is more comfortable than me asking, vice versa, we'll, I'll get it lined up either way. And the expense will come out of next fiscal year.
And they're, this is the audit for the current fiscal year, '22, okay.
So what's packed away that the auditors have access to now is July through December.
And the auditors still do their town report?
The auditors did the town report this year, yes.
And did, did John do something to?
John is, yeah, he's the one that amazingly put everything together. He's very computer illiterate as far as setting up.
So is that sort of a, can, can you continue to use that program?
He was still, yes, he's still in for auditor this year. The plan is still for that he would be putting the town report together as an auditor. So, yeah.
Every year it's a little less work because, you know, the process gets.
Right.
Cleaner.
Yeah, right.
And he didn't charge for putting the town report together.
Really?
That's John.
Along with Mark DeSani that does not charge for his site.
We need more people like that.
Well, those are two critical people.
Wimsey also donates.
Really, he does, oh my gosh, yeah.
Thank you, sir. No skeletons. Questions for me?
You have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Brandy.
Also, I forgot. I transferred $3,000 today from the money market over into the checking to cover bills. But that's all.
This is the time of year when things start getting a little tight because taxes aren't coming in for another six months, so.
Well, not tight, tight.
No, but, you know, start to.
But we'll start getting down the money sooner.
Okay, highway report.
Chuck, you there?
I am.
Hey, Chuck.
Hi, Chuck.
How you doing?
Great.
Good. Yep. Well, the highway report is that there's a lot of money up there, I guess.
There's going to be more. It's going to get worse.
I hear you. There's a few things going on. JPC Card Construction called me today. And they're doing an Emschah class. Emschah is going to come in and teach the guy, or explain to the guys what they need to do when they're in the pit with the dump trucks and all that stuff. I think it's very important that they go. It costs $90 a person. It lasts all day. It's going to be in Barton on the 16th of April.
So this is where they buy the stone from Danville? Is that C Card?
C Card's from Barton. Well, he has a pit, he has a quarry in Danville.
Yeah.
And we buy stone from him and Vicford and Minosh. And they're all, Emschah oversees them all.
Play by the same rules.
All by the same rules. Probably the same person doing the same inspections. So I think it's pretty important that we get our guys up there so that they understand that they need standard trucks when they're being loaded. They need new hard hats that are certified and the equipment they need to be so that we're now getting some good funds.
Chuck, what kind of stone are we talking about? I'm a, I'm new here.
Cuss ledge.
Just ledge, not granite, just ledge.
Ditching stone, cuss ledge, everything we buy now comes out of a quarry.
Yes.
So I think it's pretty important that it happens.
So you tell them that they need to go, is that how that works?
I've already told them we'll get it all set up. I believe Brandy's in the middle of the paperwork.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring it up before she had to.
And when, when might that happen?
April.
April.
It's going to be April 16th.
Okay.
Hey, Chuck, this is Chris. They don't have a choice. If they, if they want to be in a quarry, they have to have Emschah qualifications.
Yes, I know that.
So I don't really think that this is much of an issue because I can't even take, I can't take anybody into a quarry without.
Right. I didn't think that it was going to be an issue. This is more just for your knowledge. To know what's happening.
Yes, sir. We agree. Oh, I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
Right out.
Chuck, anything else that you want to bring up? We lost his voice.
Seems like he's muted.
There, he's back.
Equipment's in pretty good shape.
Yeah, you got to start that over. We missed what you were opening.
Oh, on the, below pro, they broke a cylinder today on the wing. And they were going after that this afternoon and get that put on. But other than that, I think the equipment's in pretty good shape.
Great, terrific.
The previous Select Board and I and Dave Hupson, the town manager of Hardwick, had talked about doing some work on the Nichols Pond Road because Myers had bought it and they would like to keep the cabins open for snow machines and stuff like that. So Greg and I have been talking about that. We're going to go and kind of assess what it needs. Michael checked into it for me.
We lost you again.
Is that? Chuck, can you hear us?
Hello? Is anybody out there see you?
I don't think he can see us. I think he can just.
I can't see any of it.
No, he just hears us. All right, go ahead, Chuck. Can you say it again?
No.
Nope.
No.
It's the Wi-Fi.
It's our, it's our Wi-Fi.
It's just set up with Wi-Fi.
Hello?
Yeah.
All right, Chuck, can you say that again?
Nichols Road.
Myers has approached Hardwick and Woodbury about keeping the road plowed up there because they. Hardwick and Woodbury about keeping the road plowed up there because they'd like to rent them camps for snow machiners up through to the Nichols Pond Dam Road.
Mm-hmm.
Greg and I have been talking about it. We need to go up and assess what it needs. And Mike and Greg checked on it for me and this is gonna be out of the town's pocket. It's not included in.
Oh, grant.
Anything we can get a grant for.
We, we have a, uh, we don't really have a formal Class Four road policy, but we do have a. An informal Class Four road.
Yeah.
Where we require the, uh, landowners to pay for the upgrade before we'll put it up for maintenance.
This I don't believe is gonna get upgraded to a Class Three. It would be a tremendous amount of money and, um. And I'm just bringing this up because most of you don't know, haven't, haven't known anything about it and. Uh, certainly the decision's up to you, but I'm just telling you what we're trying to follow up on.
Okay.
Is Camp Keegan in Woodbury and Hardwick or?
No, it's Woodbury.
It's all in Woodbury, yeah.
But Hardwick is the one doing the plowing of the road. They own the first probably three hundred yards of the road and Woodbury has a rest. And they're willing to plow it, but they'd like us to maintain it or get it fixed so they can get up through there with a ten wheel dump truck.
Any idea what it's gonna cost?
I don't know, but this was brought up to me after I got down here in Florida. Greg and I gotta go up and look at it. It's gonna be.
Tens of thousands.
I don't think you, the town definitely can't afford to do it all in one year. I know that.
It's gonna be really.
So the money we, we set aside for Class Four, man. We did up it this year.
We did.
Your financial statements don't show.
We did up it.
Don't show, so three thousand dollars.
Yep.
Now, that's, that's a culprit, right?
That's one culprit.
There, there's been a history in past where, uh, the town was very reticent about upgrading town, uh, Class Four roads.
There are so many and more people are moving on to them and wanting more services. That's why it might be nice if we did formalize a Class Four road policy.
We could consider it, certainly. But our Class Three policy is somewhat sketchy.
Yeah.
As it is. I think we would have to work through our.
Well.
Our road policy overall.
Right.
Before we went to the amending a Class Four policy.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we wanna spend the time now, but I think it's worth having a discussion about this because, uh, once you set precedence.
Exactly.
The cat's out of the bag, um, so.
Well, I wouldn't light a great big fire yet.
Okay.
Okay.
But Chuck, do you, Chuck, do you think that there could be more of these types of roads? I mean, I feel like there are a number of these. Quite a number of these through town. Where if we start to think about maintaining Class Four roads in terms of making sure upgrades are kept. It would make a difference.
This, this, uh, Nickel Pond Road is not looking, we're not looking to upgrade it. We're just looking to get it where they can get a truck up to there and plow.
Not upgrade to Class Three, but upgrade to, you know.
Upgrade to keep it functional.
Right.
North Road is another one where they're always asking for help, but.
Yep.
Yeah, but, and.
But anyway.
If we could put that one on the back burner for right now, you'd be a lot, uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't open a can of worms on that one right now.
Okay, well, thanks for the information.
Thank you, Chuck.
So just on the clarification on the North Road, that's beyond where, where it is currently maintained? Is that the idea?
Are you talking about Nichols Pond now?
Yeah. Is that what you, North Road?
No, North Road is up by East Long.
Is it by East Long?
The, uh, yeah, the other.
What's the road to, uh, East, uh, East Long? What's that called?
North Road.
North Road.
Oh, that's what I thought.
There's just another example of a place, uh, Class Four where they're always asking for help. Okay.
Well, how, do we wanna bring, do we wanna put that on an agenda and spend some time?
I think we should put it on an agenda for another meeting.
Yeah.
Just in terms of, as a policy.
Right.
Would, would that be okay, Chuck, in terms of just reviewing this in terms of policy and, uh?
He said to just put it on the back burner for now, so.
You mean in terms of, in terms of Nichols?
Yeah.
No, not Nichols, not Nichols so much as the North Road.
Well, I think that before we address this, whether it's Nichols or North Road, we should try to. Figure out a policy would be helpful. That way it's not such a big deal. But it's just one person's opinion.
Yeah.
In my, can I voice my opinion on that one?
Yes, please.
Yes, indeed.
I think you need to go into executive session when you start having that meeting.
Oh. Because?
I'll tell you when I talk to you.
Okay.
Well, that's, then we'll wait for you.
In executive session.
We'll wait for you and then have an executive session after you come back.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Good idea. That'll be like next month.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna pile into that all over.
There is history, yeah.
Um, the other, the last thing I have is Peter Daley was hired on as our third full-time employee. And Greg Adams retired, of course, so we're down to two employees. And our part-time employee, which is Tim Neal, is making more money than Peter was and. Some of that is my fault. When we hired him, when we decided to hire him, Greg and I talked about it and said we should bump him up a pay grade. On, I guess it was a state scale and for some reason. The state scale is no longer being used. So, but the bottom line is, he feels that since how he does all the labor and. The dirty work and stuff, that he should be paid more than the part-time help we have now and I agree with him a hundred percent. Are we there?
Yes.
We're here still. So you, you and Greg come up with a proposal?
I have. Greg and I talked about it and I believe that Peter should be advanced another fifty cents an hour. He's at seven fifty-one now. Greg, um, Tim is at seven, uh, seven eighty-four or something like that.
Seventeen.
So is he roughly?
Seventeen, I'm sorry, yeah.
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 Can I?
So I think that Peter should be brought up eighteen dollars per hour.
As of today?
Um.
Retroactive?
Yeah.
No.
Yes?
No. Um, I'm sorry.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Chuck, we're gonna let Brandy go for a second, all right?
Yep.
Going kinda off subject here. What we budgeted for was what the full select board decided on to go with. The three percent state and getting rid of our, our, our chart scale. It's part of our personnel policy. That's another thing that has to be, sorry, has to be finalized.
Yeah.
And get rid of the pay scale because you look in our policy now, that pay chart's in there. We don't go by it anymore.
Michael said it is, they did get rid of it in one of the drafts, but the draft has never been.
It's never been completed.
So the other thing is, is that these guys don't have a six month where you bring them before you have executive sessions. And say how well are they doing? They don't have reviews and they, that's kind of gotten out and there needs to be. So you can see where the.
Did I say something, Andy?
Yep.
Peters was waived because he'd already worked for two years.
Right.
But there is a six-month probation period. As far as Greg and I know.
But it's very, it's been very lax where.
Well, Peters was, Peters was waived because he'd been there for two ye- two years and we knew what he could do and. He's capable of doing what we need him to do. But for other employees, I, it, uh, it's not gonna be lax.
So Brandy, you're saying that they should get a review every year?
If you look at our personnel policy, it does state it.
It's, it's in the policy.
If you ever see Peter, he busts his butt and he really does.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
And who's we, Kemosabe? That's us, the select board?
Yes, you are.
We are the, we are the hires, so we.
But the road commissioner is the supervisor of.
Yep, but it's all of us.
But that was kinda dropped because Greg and Chuck came up with a total and then the select board said. No, we're gonna do it this way. And, and that's.
No, I don't think you're gonna look at it.
What's that?
I don't think that happened just like that.
Well, no, there was an amount given at the discussion of the hire and then the select board chose the rate for him off from. Tim working here longer versus Peter and that's how they came up with the seventeen fifty-one. Where Timmy's getting maybe thirty cents over because he's been here longer, but that's where.
Yeah, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-six cents different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if there was reviews.
Well, if these guys think that, think that Peter deserves more, they should have the choice, I think.
Well, it does.
I mean, we have to approve it.
I think the, I think we have to review the policy.
Me too.
Oh, God.
I know, but I think we have to just review it.
Once it's set in stone, cause that's what I get give back is.
Right, because.
Give back for who?
Employees that are, how come we're not going by this? We didn't know that it was changed. They, so we hand them their policy when they're hired. I hand them it. And in the policy it states, there's the pay chart and nobody's numbers match that pay chart because it did away with two years ago.
Right.
So we, are we talking about all town employees?
Just the employees, not the.
So ballot clerks go for minimum wage, whatever minimum wage is ballot clerks get. So the pay scale used to be road crew, clerk, treasurer, assistants. It, it was based on how long you had been here.
That was that, that was that chart that they don't use anymore.
We don't use that though.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're gonna get a three percent raise.
Cause I don't know how I'm supposed to defend what you're getting paid when they're coming to you saying.
You don't have to.
Well, I do because I'm the one that cuts, signs their check. I do payroll. Um, and there, it's not going to the charge, so. My thing is, is sorry, it's in the works and it falls back onto you guys. It's not completed.
Because it hasn't been done.
I mean, their select board minutes stating, okay, we're going with three percent raise this year and that's what we based off the budget for next year.
But that has nothing to do with the chart. That's just the, our, I mean, the. Yeah, the, cost of living raise that you, we give, that the town gives every year in addition to the chart.
No, no, not on top of the chart. It's separate.
It's separate.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I mean. It's separate from the chart, right.
Like I can take this change and that three percent and put it together. That's not what we've been doing.
Does it make sense that we all sit down and talk about this at a, a different time separately and, and try to get this sorted out so that? Is, is there a way to do that?
We've already budgeted.
We've already budgeted.
Well, nevertheless.
We can, we can forward in the future.
So it's something that, yes, the select board has to decide whether they want to increase Peter's pay.
I make a motion that we increase Peter's pay by fifty cents.
Can we, is that?
An hour, starting today, just to move on. If anybody thinks it's unfair, then we'll keep talking about it later.
So for July one, are we increasing it another step?
Another three percent. Not a step, it's three percent. That was, was decided when you did the budget.
Three percent, it's going up to seventeen as of today.
The budget meeting that they decided the three percent.
You guys have to approve that, so.
Well, can I ask, is there precedent for this? Does the select board do this?
It's your, yeah, you hold the basket.
In other words, we, so we, we, we approve the increase in pay?
You approve everybody's pay.
Everybody's pay.
Solely? We, to the board?
Yes.
So it, can there be a second to that motion before?
I will second that motion.
Okay, so now we can get more discussion?
Well, I just would like, personally, I don't, better understanding how this is going on, but, uh, I guess we. You're comfortable and Chuck's comfortable in terms of how we're doing this and.
And Peter's, and P, I mean Greg, Greg is not complaining about his pay. Chuck is not complaining about his pay. Tim is.
Should be.
Doing, you know, I don't know about Tim.
Tim has no complaints. He's part-time. He, he should not have any complaints.
Okay. Well, I think because Chuck, Chuck and Greg both feel. Strongly about this, I think we should just go for, go for, and we will work on the personnel policy. And if anybody.
That has to be a priority, I think.
If anybody gives you any, you know what, you can just send them to the select board.
I guess send them to us.
Well, all I can say personally is having hired and paid a lot of people over my time. If you have somebody good, you wanna make sure you, you treat them well and pay them well to, to make sure they stay, so.
Especially the way the towns around us are trying to steal our people.
Yeah, but that may be a problem in order.
Yeah.
No.
Cause they pay more other jobs?
They pay way more.
Oh, yeah, well.
If we don't do something, that man will be gone.
Well, we better start, we better talk.
And that's why I feel that if you guys had a time, you can sit down with him and it's just more personal and you're the one setting it.
Yeah.
Well, and, and we should be prepared for the next, you know, budget, then we're, we're covering all of this, but anyway. Okay, I mean.
Vote on?
Yeah, let's vote on the, uh.
Anymore?
Did you make that motion?
I made a motion.
Okay, then do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, Chuck?
Fifty cents an hour more.
That's correct. Fifty cents an hour more.
All right.
Can I throw another thing in the pot and just do as of Sunday? Cause our, it's Sunday to Saturday.
Yeah, but this is a whole week. Oh, Sunday.
Sunday to Saturday.
Like two days, days before yesterday. Okay. All right, yeah, fine.
Let's, let's do a, a full week.
And three percent on July one.
We can talk about retroactive.
And I guess as far as the road report, that is about all I have unless you have questions or other thoughts or whatever.
I'm hoping at some point before summer, we'll sit down with you, probably when you come back, Chuck. Just, we need an overview of all the projects that are in the works.
Oh, yes. That's one other thing. I'm glad you said that. The, the survey is done, been done on Winston Morris Hill up there.
Mm-hmm. Where is that?
That's a wicked corner.
No, I mean, where's the survey itself? If someone wanted to see it. He's gone again.
Oh, that's there.
Gone again.
I said the, uh, I would like to, uh, get working on getting the, the.
Diana, could you stop clicking your pen?
Yeah, always bothers you, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. Thank you, thank you.
You're so sensitive.
We lost Chuck.
Put him on the speaker. Turn me up.
Can you hear me? No.
I wish we had gone like the owl.
Was that, no, you can't hear me?
Yeah, maybe let's be back for a second, yeah.
Yeah, you're back.
Okay, um, the survey on Winston Morris Hill has been done. And I'd like to get that right away recorded so we can start getting that laid out and figure out who is gonna do. Where we're gonna get the money from to do it.
Yeah.
Um, what we need a PTTR for that also?
We have to.
It would have a deed. Yeah, well, I, I don't know what the plan is, so I can't say. If there's a piece of land that's being transferred in title to the town, then it'll have to go through a deed and a PTTR.
It has to go through a deed and PTTR.
And that's another.
And, and also.
Only five hundred dollars. Chris will do that.
The, the, the road that's being abandoned, does that have to also be transferred back to the Maceles?
Yes, it does.
Hmm.
That's right.
Yes, it does. They want to lay them back.
Yeah, I mean, that's right. I mean, it's a, yeah.
They're transferring a title.
Mm-hmm.
Could someone, where, where could one see the copy of the survey?
I'm not sure. Michael told me it was done and I don't know if he had a copy of it or.
Okay, I'll bet.
Is anything in the town clerk's office, Robin?
I haven't seen anything.
Do, do, do you know who, who did the survey?
A lady from Cabal.
What's her name?
Oh, lady from Cabal.
Sunlight Surveying, Lisa Jeanette.
She's coming in tomorrow. She's scheduled. I probably shouldn't say that.
Actually, Brandy, if you could give me a call when she was there, I'd like to talk to her.
Yeah, I can do that.
All right. All right. But Dave and Laura are all gone home getting it done, so I don't think there's any danger of them changing their mind, but I would like to take advantage of it while we can.
But is that another thing that we have to find money for?
No, it's a title.
Uh, the survey is all paid for.
No, I mean, the project.
It's in our name.
Yeah.
But the project itself?
Yes.
Still looking for money for that?
Yes, but um and I don't remember what Michael called it, but it's something to do with the hydraulic water load on.
There is a, it's a.
Hydraulically or it's runs.
Grant for?
There's a, we have two hydrologically connected.
Thank you.
All right, so hydrologically connected surfaces and drainage areas are eligible for a series of grants.
Oh.
This would count.
Great.
It's deep.
Hold.
So that has to be applied for?
We would have to apply for it.
Yeah.
Yep, and we need the survey to do that.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, I believe the survey needs to be recorded before you can do that.
Absolutely true, sir. I agree. Once the survey is recorded, we can consider applying for a grant.
Yes.
Has she been paid?
It was donated.
It was donated.
Somebody else already paid for it, so I'm hoping she'll bring it in tomorrow. If not, I can talk to her about it, get in a copy for the town.
Somebody paid for the survey?
I thought that's what you had said, that it was all paid for and done.
No, the town was gonna pay for that.
Oh.
Interesting.
Okay.
So the next step would involve hiring an engineer to do a design?
Well, the next step is get it in our name so that we can what layout where the room wants to be, then we can start talking to an engineer.
Yeah, there there's a couple of steps before we can actually hire somebody.
So and then we would apply for the grant before going ahead with the project?
We have to get a general plan for the project. And then we can apply for the grant because we have to submit something before we can apply for the grant.
Oh, okay.
Question?
Miss Brandy.
Pick your brain. Typically, does Gillies or or does Gillies do our P T T Rs?
No. If we needed a land transfer with a deed and stuff, I wouldn't go to him. I would go to my, uh, Chris.
Grace Green, that's what I was thinking. Okay, that was just a question. I didn't think he had done
No.
Any proper transfers for us.
They do some, but.
Does a lot of deeds.
Chris is much more.
Reasonable.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, he does a lot of volunteer work for us, too. So.
Anything else, Chuck?
Uh, just that we're leaving here on, I think it's the seventeenth of April, so the twenty-first and twenty-second, we should be home.
Great.
So if you wanna have a face-to-face meeting or whatever executive session, I should be home in time to before anything really gets started.
Okay, thanks, Chuck.
You wanna stay on for a minute?
Yeah.
We were gonna talk about, oh, go ahead.
Is that John all done?
No, he's listening.
We're not done with the road stuff.
Okay, there's something about hiring Michael Gray. I was wondering if you're just just gonna get past it.
No, that's what that was what I was gonna bring up next. Yeah, so we had talked and you had talked, we talked with you about hiring Michael. But more hours than he currently puts in for as a road administrative assistant to help the rest of us come up to speed on everything. Are you still here, Chuck? Yeah.
I am.
Okay, so you guys, we've talked about that, right?
Not me, but.
Yeah, we have.
What do you mean? I was never here before talking about that.
No, you haven't talked, we didn't talk about hiring Michael Gray?
Not Mike, no.
Over email, we didn't, but. Sorry.
Well, anyways.
Yeah, I mean, I I I've seen it, but I haven't I haven't heard it or discussed it, but I mean, I'm 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 fine with it. I just.
He's in a lot of, yeah, he's in the middle of a lot of ongoing projects that
Yeah.
you and I know nothing about.
Well, you know about the Beavers, I hope.
That, yeah, that's different. The Beavers is separate. He's still gonna continue to do the Beavers, but that's a separate pay item. So he was hoping to get us to tell him a little bit like what we were expecting of him and so on, but.
Can this all wait until Chuck's comes up and we can all have a?
Well.
How soon do we have to get this resolved, Chuck?
We don't, we doesn't, it's not really up to him.
Oh, I don't think it's any big deal that we're getting it resolved. I just wanna keep everything, I want you people to keep it in the back of your minds so that we can move it on it.
It's teed up, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Anything else?
It's hard hiring Michael to help out with the grants and stuff like that, and I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I I tend to agree. He has a really, he has a knack for being able to write these and he already has a lot of grants in progress. It seems like it would be nice to have Michael involved in.
Continue to be involved.
Mm-hmm. And he would, I mean, he's already in the payroll for a couple of different things. One is the Beavers and one is the Road Administrative Assistant. It's called or Highway Assistant or something like that, so we do need to have a new position. It would just be slightly expanding what he's already been doing for nothing as a select board member. Well, some of it he was getting paid for, but a lot of it he was doing for nothing as a select board member. And he agreed that he'd like to stay at five, fifteen dollars and forty-five cents an hour that he's been making. But you wanna hold off on that?
As a as a motion?
No, well, you just said you wanna wait.
Well, I was thinking about the coordination with 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 Chuck, but as far as his being, you know, um, hired, I don't have any problem with that.
Okay.
Well, I'll make the motion then.
Hey, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Great.
Fifteen forty-five an hour.
Yeah. They're worth every penny. I don't think he's gonna go overboard.
Yeah, well, he doesn't go overboard. Anything else, Chuck?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, we'll have we'll have one more meet meeting before you head north.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you for your time.
All right.
Thanks, Chuck.
You all have a good night and welcome to the board. Hopefully, we can make some good stuff happen.
With your help.
Yes. Team effort.
We're gonna rely on you a lot.
Well,
Okay.
that's what I'm here for.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll do my best.
Right.
Well, thank you, thank you.
All right, you folks have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye, Chuck.
Bye.
We're a little late in our agenda, aren't we?
We are a bit late.
We're supposed to be.
My first agenda.
What's that? Yeah.
We were supposed to beat that half an hour meeting we had last time.
That was a weird one.
ARPA.
Skip, you're up.
No, ARPA's next.
Where's ARPA?
ARPA Committee updated.
Six thirty-five.
This is an old one.
In town plan, oh, well, that's, yeah. Actually, I switched it because a couple of meetings ago Laura asked if they could be on earlier because they have kids at home.
And Laura's sick.
And and Skip was, Skip can stay out late. Sorry. So, ARPA?
Thank you.
So we have met a number of times by the old previous select board. I'm not really sure what update means. I can tell you one of our, I've got so much going on in my brain. Um, so we have an application that we've come up with. We have a survey that we've come up with. We really want to involve as many Wood Barriers in this process as possible. One of the holdbacks releasing the application is wondering from you guys a little guidance on due dates of the application. Should the, one of the things that we talked about was having trying to figure out how we could do like a rolling due date because I think that this information is slowly gonna get leaked out. I don't mean leaked out, but it it's hard to get as many people on board. It it's like somebody when when you guys were all being selected and we're meeting, one of the people in town had no idea that we had a pre-town meeting. Didn't even know that that was a thing. So I want as many people to know that this ARPA money is a thing and that we want people's input on that because I think the ARPA's goal is to try and make sure that as many people benefit from this money. It's a wicked lot of money.
Can I quickly ask, the survey, will that be such that it'll be sort of prioritizing how what people want?
Yes, yes, so I don't have a copy of it, um, unfortunately, and I can't get another copy of it because when I looked through it, it considered me having taken the survey, so now I can't log back in it. I know, so be wicked careful when you write, so that's kind of a giant.
Is that a Survey Monkey kind of thing?
Yes, exactly. Tara, one of our board members, Tara Rogerson, is putting the survey together. And it is really good, but we feel like there's some tweaks that we need to make to it and that to do the free Survey Monkey, you can only, you're only allowed ten questions.
Right.
So that's tough to come up with ten questions to try and encapsulate how do we spend right, like two hundred and fifty plus thousand dollars.
Do we have a Survey Monkey account? Anybody?
I think it was just that one time shot and Laura did it for us, so.
Yeah, we never, we we never had a formal account.
So that you the survey is gonna go for both both ARPA distributions then? That will set that will set the disbursement for both, uh, in other words, you're gonna get half and then you'll get another half later?
Right, like already the town has half of the two hundred and fifty thousand. Right now, there's a hundred and thirty-one thousand roughly available. That's already in our coffers. That's ready to be dispersed.
Which we have decided not to spend.
No, we've started spending it.
We've started spending some of it that was approved.
This equipment.
Correct, right, 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 which ARPA knew, right, that that was our assembly.
Can you, can you, I I'm new on this. What equipment?
The equipment that's here, that's.
That equipment?
Yes.
This time.
The stuff that Michael set up, so that that equipment can also come to ARPA meetings, can also go to any other of the town meetings. This equipment will go and record all of that for everybody to have that open door transparency. So that's why, and ARPA was.
My question, your survey, you can only take that online? You won't have a paper copy in case somebody doesn't have a computer?
We could, and I feel like we should. I don't know how we would administer that or where. Maybe have copies at the town clerk's office where I could do it, or no?
Yeah, so just screenshot the survey itself on Screen Monkey. Send it to me, screenshot, and then I can just make copies and and we can get the word out that they're.
We could start with Skip and all about surveying or looked at the planning commission. They did a extensive survey.
I would like to talk to them again because it it seems like they've done, I don't think ARPA wants to reinvent the wheel.
He did an online survey and then there were complaints, and so he had to go back and do it again and mail it to people.
If you need help, just give me a call.
Okay. So we may invite you to our next meeting. Simple as that. Yes, we may reach out and ask you to come to our next meeting again, please. The biggest giveaway or takeaways that we've taken so far from working with Katie and Grace, who forgive me, we're not legal city in towns and.
Regional planning.
Thank you, those two ladies, was really informative. It was a great meeting. It seemed like a lot of people attended and it was videoed and all that. Their biggest takeaways were, take your time, spend it right, you don't wanna have to repay it. At first, we were given like the set of guidelines that we were supposed to go by, but now it seems like that
On the window, yeah.
Spend it on, what do you own there? Here we go, what do you want?
I don't think they expected towns to hold on to it as long as they have been holding on to the money.
Well, because everybody's afraid that we're gonna spend it wrong and then you're gonna end up having to pay it back.
Right.
But the the things that were logistic of, yes, you could at the first. I mean, those are still there. Have you received any applications?
We have not really because we're having, we we sort of sent out one and we sort of sent out a broad call of so the fire department has sort of sent in, but we're not really, we're kind of disregarding that only because it's, I feel like, we feel like the application should be adhered to, so nobody has actually filled out an application yet because we're waiting to figure out what the due date should be. And I think we need a little guidance from you guys because, and how is the money gonna be dispersed?
So the criteria for for this got really changed from what was originally proposed.
To just about like I just talked about, like, what do you want, what do you?
It was very, it was easy.
Yeah.
Very much loosely.
Right.
And and saying that it's very much more loose, we still wanna be careful on how we spend it because we really don't wanna get caught with our pants down and end up having to to pay it back.
Well, who, excuse me, who who would who would question or 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 or, you know?
It's the the federal, the IRAS is the one that's gonna come to me when the money's gone and I have to explain, pay the trail, copies of everything.
Yes.
Who has to be?
And and what do you call the fiduciary or what, you're like, I like.
No, because I'm the town, because she's become my signature on the line.
But now that there's no standards.
Yes, sir.
Well, no, they really aren't. There there are standards, but not really. I mean, it's a pretty, you can connect the dots pretty freaking easily. Um, but so we just wanna make sure that we're on the right track for you guys and that we're doing the right thing and we're going in the right direction. What is it that you want from us? Are we gonna continue with the application process? Can you give us guidance on the application dates?
Your partner has something to say.
You do? Please, yeah, yeah.
One of the the woman that's in charge of the ARPA that we talked to on video on conference, she said the plans were safe as far as paybacks. If you spent it on the town. She said you could spend it on the town in any way you want. She said, but as far as spending it personally on people, like, say.
Helping businesses or.
Helping anybody personally, whether it be one or a business, she said she did not advise to do that because she said there's all kinds of other programs. She said there is a ton of programs. She said they have a whole list. She said, try to keep this money, spending it on the town. And one of my questions to her, because we don't own the property on this building next to the old store.
Right.
We were talking about fixing that up and we're really worried because we don't actually own land, you know, we could lose that building. It'd have to be really bad situation.
It's a long term, it's a long term, it's a long term lease.
Correct.
Right.
So we were worried, I mean, we wanna, the building needs some work.
Who who's the lessor in that situation?
The lessor, but the town owns the building, the people who own the store own the land.
Own the land.
And all the.
The 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 defunct store?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we were worried about fixing that building because it does need some work, so we can have maybe these meetings over there. So I asked the woman from the state about it and we explained the situation with that land and she said absolutely. And we were really worried about putting money, she goes, no, that's not a problem. She goes, you guys can fix that. I mean, it got that lax on the spending money.
Well, I think I think that.
That lax.
I think it would have been allowed anyways.
For the state. She said, well, she told us pretty much in a nutshell, you were there, right, and you weren't there to. So anyway, she said, just like she just said, too many towns are not spending this money because there was way too much gray area. So they said, you know what? You make sure the towns spend this money, try to keep it in the towns, and just spend it. They want it spent. They want it to boost the economy. They want to get things going. And the feds are like, we gave out all this money, why is, things aren't happening here? So they just, the rules pretty much went out the window, just so you know.
The application that we have come up with has been submitted to those two ladies and they have both reviewed it and are fine with the application that we've put together. Again, I feel like I'm stuck on, but I need clarification on due dates. When do you want the applications? How do you want them submitted? Do you want them submitted every year as we get them? Do you want them submitted once a month? Do you want them, how quickly do you want to disperse this? If any inclination as to the original ask from the fire department? If we give them everything they want, that initial, it's a wicked lot of money. And while I'm okay with it, I don't feel like one institution should be given all of it. I mean, it's 250,000 plus dollars. And I'm not going to repeat the number because I don't know exactly what they've asked for. And until we get an actual application, and I even feel like you guys, or you guys, should submit one for things that have already been bought. I think we want to keep that paper trail as clear and as evident as we possibly can. And we're ready to get this out there along with the survey. Well, we're going to meet Wednesday, I think, and we're going to tweak the survey a little bit. But until we know due dates and how do we tell people, like, how to, how do you do a rolling due date? Is that even possible? What do you?
So I watched your March 3 meeting and you were really talking a lot about, well, the select board is going to make the decision anyway. That came up a lot.
It did. And that's where, I personally am fearful that what I'm doing is going to be a waste of my time because we're going to get all these applications in and we're going to do all the footwork and we're going to put them to you in order that us five people have decided from top to bottom of importance. But what we're afraid of is you're.
We're going to buy a truck.
Already had your made, right, you already got your mind made and it doesn't matter what we've done.
Well, but, but.
That's the, I mean.
That's how we feel.
Wait a minute.
Or I feel as a member of that group.
But you're doing, you're going to be doing a survey, so we're going to look to the townspeople to weigh in on this. And I think that's critical, absolutely critical. And, and so until we get that, I mean, we can set up a timeline, but we ought to get on that survey pretty quickly and send it out. And I would say, I think you should mail it to all residents of Woodbury.
Paper too?
What's that?
Paper, survey too? So that's going to, and are we allowed to spend the ARPA money for the paper survey?
I don't know why not. I'm.
Well, that's what, I don't want to get caught, again, I was saying, I don't want to get caught with my pants down and somebody being like.
Well, I don't want to see you with your pants down either, so. But the, I think the best thing is to get a move on this. Come up with some questions if you need help from us or whatever. But let's get that out to the open and see what people are, what are thinking about. I mean, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of stuff is going on that's, that's, that we may not all know about. Robin?
Now, would this survey also go out to like the summer campers?
No.
I don't think so. I think it's the residents and that would be good enough.
One per voter checklist.
Taxpayers.
And one per household, not, not to all the.
They're not a resident. Say that again? If they're not a resident, they would be given.
Not taxpayers, but the voter checklist, one per household.
Voter checklist?
One per household.
Paul, do you have a question? Yeah.
I do.
One of the reasons that we're here tonight is, we didn't know if you guys had, you know, some small projects or some small things that you wanted to, I mean, before we get into the survey.
Right, did you already have?
Did you already have some low hanging fruit?
That you already had spent on?
Board, you know, probably had a few small things like, well, we could use a little money for this or a little money for that. You know, we kind of want to know what your thoughts are on that.
Well, the only thing that comes up to mind right away is the cemetery commission, you know, they, they wanted, and I think we approved it.
They got tons of money. They've got tons of money.
I know.
They just got approved for.
Plus they've got a ton of money in there.
Twenty some thousand.
But that's something we want to know is, you know.
Approved.
Approved for.
I mean, we've been talking about the town hall, but, you know, now I watched your meeting and I saw you say that you were looking for some guidance from the board.
Yes.
Yes.
And I don't know what kind of guidance you got from the last board, but I think your task should be to come up with some criteria. For example, do you want something that helps the people of Woodbury? Something that helps the most people of Woodbury or just a few people of Woodbury? Something that reduces the taxes, is that going to be one of your criteria? Or improve services or maybe does something that we couldn't ordinarily afford to do? Yeah, I think it should be your job to come up with the criteria so that when the applications come in, no matter when they come in, you know, you probably don't want to, if you start taking them in next month, you probably will take a look at them maybe in June and.
This is just an example. This is strictly just an example. But you now have a road that Chuck just talked about that needs some work. You know, a little bit of this money can be used, just that's an example, just a suggestion. But there's some money that's taxpayers. If you guys decide that the town has to pay for that, the taxes won't have to go out because, you know, you've got that money there to put a little bit into that road, just an example. But it's still could be done. You know, little projects like that, that building in the town, the installation needs to be ripped out of the roof because it's.
You're talking about the town hall?
The town hall and do some, a little work on that.
Are you going to do that from the top or the bottom?
I also think, how does the town clerk and Lori feel about digitizing the town clerk's office? I feel like the ARPA money needs to be kind of brought our town clerk's office up into a current to make, the world is going digital, the world is going fiber, the world is going.
Yeah, and nothing to say that COVID is behind us now.
No, no, they're trying to make us believe we're in the endemic end of it, but there's no, we put poppets on the back, head back up there. So I feel like we're digitizing the town clerk's office if that's something that you guys want to submit an application for. Those funds should be allocated.
And that sounds great. There was a lot of talk about fiber.
Yeah, and I think that, is that really worth the way to go? Because I feel like there's too many.
It's going to happen anyway. They're continuing to put high speed down the road.
Correct.
And I don't think we should be spending a lot of money to try to get something in advance of that. So as far as the town hall especially, I know Skip came up with a proposal, but anyway, I just think that's, personally, I really think we should think about revitalizing downtown Woodbury.
As much as we can.
Shatties is going to be closing soon.
Right, so is that where the new store is going to go?
Do you have any idea how much work you'd have to do to get that, to get that easy gas out of there?
And then what you.
I don't know if you guys know, but they put out a Facebook, they're closing April 1.
They put a what?
April 1.
April 1.
They're closing?
They're closing.
No kidding? Oh, wow.
They just announced it today.
Today.
So there's a way to our beautiful little downtown, and I know that our town planning commission.
That's the rest of our, that's the rest of our downtown.
Right, and the commission, and now that the little green space, we put it that you can't even build there. So there's no place in downtown Woodbury to even put a store.
But you have existing, you have existing buildings.
Like I'm not trying to be a jerk, but what are we revitalizing?
Well, you got a non-functioning church. A Methodist church is not functioning.
We don't own that though.
Well, that's, that, I mean.
But why do we want to? Why would we want to buy?
Perhaps you can, we could turn that into some kind of usable social space. Who knows?
I was going to say, there's been many towns that have taken a church and turned it into a store.
And so what's the battle situation there? Is that part of the town revitalization?
No, that's, that would, anything down there, you're going to have to put a tight tank in.
I mean, that's, that's, that's.
Yeah, the town, the state's never going to allow that, but just, you know.
Well, the state, this already has. I mean, that's what the town hall has, is a tight tank.
So anyway, all this discussion, this is what we're here asking.
Right, this is what we're asking.
Is, you know, you guys have a lot of input, more than we've gotten.
I think that.
Just normal people in the town, this is what we're after.
I feel like, once you have the survey, then, then we can help.
But if everybody says they want a store.
Right.
You know, that's.
I thought there was a survey or something in terms of the downtown. There was quite a, quite a, where did that come from?
When we started this, the.
Well, that was your survey.
The planning commission tried that and had lots of hiccups and flip flops. I get, I'm putting words in your mouth tonight, but when we want to do that survey, we are going to look to the planning commission. Because like I said at the beginning of this, we're not into reinventing the wheel. We're here very much in the vein of trying to make Woodbury attractable, right? And we want to use this money to affect.
Us.
I don't want that survey.
The Woodbury residents primarily.
Help you get as much people, yes, and get as much input from people. Maybe it does the library. The library hasn't been able to have pie breakfast for two years. Does the library need some money? Does PTO or friends of Woodbury Elementary, they haven't had any fundraisers, do they need some money? Do you know what I mean? Like, we need these Elizabeth Stratton and her amazing brain and the things that she comes up.
And she just does it.
Does she need any money? Because she's got these amazing things that every single or 52 kids or however many we have now, every one of those kids benefits from her enthusiasm.
Absolutely.
And if she needs money, then the ARPA money is there for her, not her, but it should be used.
Right. Well, we should move on, but do your survey near if you need some more info for us. But I think you've got an idea of where we're going and I think getting that out as soon as possible is critical.
I agree. I think that whatever state the survey is in.
Moving forward quickly, I think we're going to try and meet, I don't know if we're shortly warned, but we are going to try and meet on Wednesday. But we were kind of holding, I don't know if I can get out of the agenda and stuff warned.
I think the survey is nice, but I think your group should, should come up with some general values by which you're going to rank these things.
Make some calls.
You don't have to get down to specifics, you know.
I think Skip had his hand up and then Brandy.
I just have a question on distribution of funds.
Thank you, yes.
Does it have to go through the SAM? SAM is a system.
Not that I know of. I have to report to the IRS quarterly. So as of April, I have to report to them what I've spent on, to keep on this gadget.
Yeah, so system of accounts is a federal agency that the town is enrolled in for any grant money that comes from the federal government. So I don't know, ARPA funds fall into that same category as grant money?
It has. Interesting question.
That we have to go through. Brandy and I are in the process of updating.
Renewing SAMS.
Because it's a region, you know, who's responsible in the town now since the select board has changed, so.
It doesn't appear that it goes through that.
I don't think so. I haven't seen anything.
I haven't seen anything about that.
ARPA discussing SAMS.
It seems like it's an independent well of fund.
I'll find out.
So.
If you don't want to take a look, Skip, that'd be great.
On your survey, you want a due date?
Yes, I want a due date.
Select our application and our survey. Select board, choose a date.
Yes, please.
Well, they don't have it yet and they don't know how to send it, how you're going to send it out. So if you have a goal for, if you want a goal.
Well, we need, we would have, we would have a 30 day window, right?
Right.
For responding to the survey.
For upon to the survey.
Really, so.
Okay, I'm just going to go 30 day window.
So let's make a 30 day window.
Well, how much time do you need, how much time do you need to get this together before your survey goes out?
So we.
You meet once, once a month, right? Or how often do you meet?
We're pretty much, we'll only meet more often, but.
Can you meet before the end of March?
We're going to meet this Wednesday.
This Wednesday.
So hopefully we can nail the details on the survey this Wednesday, get it published, get it. Can we email it to you and you can print it out to him?
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's all, it's for the town.
Right.
So if you give her a date, then they can slap it on the survey.
We can put it on the survey. It'll be done.
And there's one thing about, you know, this, this thing can be in two halves too, you know?
You mean between the two Harpers or?
Well, this survey can be now, but then, you know, what is it?
Because we don't have all the money.
Yeah, and August we get another check. So if you miss this vote, this can be the same thing.
Right, you haven't missed your entire opportunity because we're going to have the first wave of money.
Is it above three years you have time to, it has to be spent?
Yes, this time.
2002, 27.
27, 27 is our, is our deadline.
So if we can finalize the survey this Wednesday, which is the 16th.
Yeah, we'd like to.
We can get it in people's hands into your.
Yep, August.
By, say, the 17th.
You have to figure out how you're going to tabulate it too, if you're not doing the Survey Monkey.
I don't foresee there being maybe 50 applications, if that.
This isn't for applications, this is just.
I want so many people, almost 220 people that are.
Accessible.
So let's try for, let's try for the 7th of April.
And they don't have to have a, you don't have to give a month to turn it around.
Just getting it out or getting.
You know, they can.
Just getting it out by the 7th, is that what you're saying?
Right.
No.
To receive it back?
To receive it.
Well, because if we can get it.
That's only like two weeks.
Yeah, that doesn't.
Oh, sorry, the 14th. I apologize. The 14th of April.
14th for what?
Receipt.
For them to, for it to be come back?
Yeah, and I would say time is of the essence. There's something on this survey saying this is absolutely critical. It's federal money, we need to know what to do with it and you've got to get back to us.
And the girl that we talked to, she didn't encourage to get it.
Yes.
She said, let's get this money out.
Well, we.
Right. So can I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
Please, in April, the 25th, the board meets and if they can review the applications at that time.
We're not going to be reviewing the applications, but.
You make the decision on the.
But you, but yeah, but you have to go through them.
Yes.
First, I mean, first you got your survey and then you're going to have to have at least time for applications.
Which is good because if we took the, if we use the 14th, that gives us more than a week to review it.
But that's just a survey.
Yeah.
That's just a survey, that's not for the applications.
Oh, gosh, you're right.
You got, I mean, people are working on their applications already, I assume, the people who have ideas.
The people who know about it, yes, yes. Well, and they're, they're, they're working on it, but they don't have an actual.
Right.
Because I think we should be sticklers as far as getting an actual, actual application
Right.
from you guys for that stuff, from those art department or what they want, from whomever. Again, because, forbid, if you spend it wrong, we want to be able to prove that it's expected.
Can I just, as a side note, there was a mention of a town beach, I think.
That would be awesome.
Well, that came before the Woodbury Fund as an idea and it became, it became very clear that unless you have a town beach that's open and if it's secluded, you're, you're looking at trouble because people will go down there and trash it and do whatever. And, and I think that's, that's a really valid issue. I mean, look at East Long and other places where that's happened. I'm sure that's happened at Curtis and other places.
I had another, sorry to interrupt before I, I had another towns person approach me and ask me if ARPA money could be used for revitalizing the, the town well, the town pump, the town.
Oh, that's not by the state.
Oh, the water tub.
Thank you, the water tub, the water tub.
What's wrong with that?
Estate owns that.
That's a state.
What's wrong with that? People love that.
It's ratchet. It just needs to be shushed up a little bit, for lack of a better word, you know what I mean? It just needs to be.
We'd like to see those, uh, tiny.
Well, let's not, let's not get into these, these.
I'm just saying that that's, yes, but that's, and if you have.
If you need help with a survey, get in touch with us. But I think, and I think you can generalize. I don't think you have to say, you know, this building or that, you know. Just generalize, what would you like to see happen in Woodbury?
How do you want to see this money?
How's it going to be spent? How do you want to spend it?
Because I don't want anybody mad at me.
Yeah, some, ask some general questions about values and then ask, you know, if people have some specific things they want to point out.
All right. Do, then you're fine with whatever we come up with for the survey or do you want?
Unless you, unless you think that you need some input, yes. Go, go for it.
You guys are a committee?
Yeah, yeah, and I think.
By the select board?
I'm committed to it. And one of the questions, Laura, if I hope I get it right. So like, if a person were to come forward and say, I need money because I wasn't able to work for two years and now, and forgive the analogy, but I'm just going with it. My septic tank is overflowing and I'm screwed and I haven't made any mortgage payments and I this and I that and I need help for that.
And programs for that.
There's programs in place for that. So who do we?
That's a no.
Is it up to us to discover what those programs are to?
No, no, you're just going to say there's going to be no personal gain on this or, you know, this isn't going to any person or whatever. It's not.
Okay, it's all for.
The general, the well-being for the town.
For general public well-being.
Right, and so that person can find for the resources.
Yes.
And I think even in the ARPA stuff that we've been given by Katie and Grace, they gave us different avenues that we could give to people. So I just want to, okay.
Yeah, it's not for.
Maybe round two or whatever, but let's see where we go with round one. Maybe round two or whatever, but let's see where we go with round one.
Absolutely not for personal gain.
Not for, but.
So are we certain on the, are we all clear on the dates? Do we all understand the dates?
We'll meet with them on Wednesday, we'll finalize it, we'll get it to you on Thursday with, by God's grace, and then have everything back in and finalized, hopefully we'll put on the application, we want the, uh.
And we're gonna wait until the twenty fifth to, to.
Weekend.
Oh, is that what we're doing in April, waiting for the twenty fifth meeting to approve?
No, we're not gonna approve any.
We're not gonna approve anything yet.
Give people some weeks to put their applications together.
If we're gonna put the survey out by the eighteenth, we're, we'll be looking for the results back by the fourteenth, so that will give us time to review them and give survey results to you guys, hopefully by the twenty fifth.
So you're gonna let people have a whole month to fill out this little survey?
I think, don't you, no, you don't want to give people time? You think it'll just fall through the cracks?
I think they'll just put it aside.
Give them two weeks?
Yeah, I would give them two weeks.
I think a couple of weeks is probably our.
It's still gonna take a while to get.
Okay.
Well.
As long as we distribute it efficiently.
We're not gonna be spending any money for a while.
Right, as long as it's distributed correctly.
Yeah, and you could say time is, this is federal money, time is of the essence.
Right, right, because the application that we have, it's just, we don't want to get so wordy, like lose people.
We want to make it very, very brief.
Keep them entertained, you want to keep them. There's always time to lose a word if people get lost.
So now what is the date that they have to have the survey back?
So I think we're gonna do.
If they put it.
So if we're done with it by the seventeenth and give it to, uh, why am I in February, March? Uh, we're done with it on the sixteenth, we give it to you for the seventeenth. We put a due date back for the thirty first, because that's like almost two weeks.
That's, yeah, that sounds good. It's just a survey, it's not like after.
Thirty first of.
So then what, then afterwards?
Then they have to pull the relatives through there.
Review them and check them over, blah, 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 blah.
Get your applications out and.
Get the application done as soon as possible and have as much information as we can give to you for the twenty fifth as possible.
Yeah, why don't you?
Who's making the agendas now? Emane Mo? So you will, okay.
Yeah, so the, when's the due date, as, which?
So we're gonna have a due date back.
For the survey.
For the survey, back for eight, uh, March thirty first.
April twenty fifth agenda, you'll have the ARPA board on the agenda on the twenty fifth.
Yes.
Okay, but then you've got, you've got, you've got three weeks of what are we doing during that three week period?
Looking at the surveys and trying to.
They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to work on their application and they have to get the application out. So, Robin or whoever's gonna help her with this mailing, check with John Reed, because when he was getting the town report together, I'm pretty sure he put together a mailing list that was just like one for each.
On Excel.
One for each house.
Household.
Although, we still get three, so we should go down to, because we get one for me, for Kevin, and for Mac Dolph.
It should be just by house location.
We got three announcements, we got three town reports, we got three.
We did send a postcard to every single person, but the town reports.
Oh, maybe you're right, excuse me, I may like this, no, you might be right, we did only get one town report, but we did get three postcards.
We did try, let's, let's move on, I think we've covered this.
Are we good? So we're on the same page?
Yeah, Skip?
I have just one more comment, if anyone's stuck on their application, you know, what would be a good use of these funds? Look at the town plan, the goals and objectives.
Right.
Section of the town plan.
Yes.
And the implementation, implementation strategy.
We should put that on there.
Is the plan?
The town plan is an aspirational plan.
It's a great plan.
It is a great plan.
It's a great plan.
And it does set out goals and objectives.
No, no offense, but that's, that's very strong, what you, you, yeah, it's a great document.
Planning to put something forward for a, oh, okay.
Tell you he might have to.
We're going into exactly the session that's mine, talking about.
Yeah, wow.
Okay, so I hope I answered all of your next questions.
Well, you're next on the agenda, Skip.
If you need any help.
Thank you.
In the survey, just give me a call.
Yes, we absolutely will.
Thank you very, very much.
Sure, thank you guys. Terrific.
Thanks, Chris. Before we get to yours, can I ask, when you guys do your mailings, do you need some help with your paperwork? I know somebody that'd be willing to help you.
So the select board is agreeing that they want every application sent to every home?
Household, yeah.
That's what they, they want, yeah.
That's what ARPA.
Resident, year-round resident.
Like four hundred or so.
I mean, do you need some help?
You like to stuff envelopes?
I know somebody who would go help.
I know, we did it, the entire planning commission descended upon the town hall, and we stuffed envelopes for a day and a half.
Day and a half, how many did you send out?
About to have.
Seven hundred, seven hundred.
Oh, because you sent it to every, all, all residents.
I don't share my tax bills when I mail them out, but these I'm fine with.
All right.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna stick around and listen for a while longer.
I know, I know, I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, you want to talk or anything?
All right, we got it.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Oh, this is my name?
It is.
No.
Reading material.
Oh, whoa.
So those are paper copies of the, uh, information I've sent out via email to you guys. And the first, the first piece of paper is the town plan project summary. It just gives chronological order of what the planning commission did in order to bring the town plan to where it is now. And where it is now is in the select board's lap to adopt the plan, for a public meeting, adopt the plan, and report with it or not.
This is the mighty plan that, this is, this is?
This is a, a version of that plan.
It is, it's the town plan.
It's a town plan, and it's, and would this be what you're looking for to, to get, to move along and, and?
Well, there, there are steps in order in which to do that. And so we, we, the planning commission adopted the town plan on December twentieth. And at the subsequent select board meeting on December twenty seventh, the plan was given to you. And you accepted the plan, a copy was filed with, uh.
Town office.
Top clerk, Robin, and we're moving forward, so.
There's not a timeline on this, is there?
There is, yeah.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there.
So the, the second document is a letter from the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission. And they received a copy of the draft plan, the same draft plan that you guys have. And just a brief synopsis of this letter is that it meets all the criteria in terms of state statute. And also it meets the criteria of the comprehensive electric plan, energy guns, excuse me, the energy guns, it meets all those criteria. Okay, the next sheet of paper is a checklist for municipal plan adoption. So that states you folks have a hundred and twenty days in which to hold a public meeting to, uh, bring the public together, have them take another look at the town plan. And subsequently, you can vote to adopt the town plan or not. If you choose to vote to adopt the town plan, then it gets distributed to the Department of Housing and Community Development and to the Regional Planning Commission.
So the date of April twenty sixth, twenty twenty-two?
That's the drop dead date in terms of the hundred and twenty day bogey in which you have to hold the town, uh, town, the public meeting.
A public meeting, so we would need to do it at least sixty days before that.
Actually, it's fifteen days.
Well, we warn it typically, sixty days beforehand.
Yeah, this public.
We don't have sixty days though, this is March, it was given to you in December.
It was given to us.
You don't need sixty days, you need fifteen days.
To, to get in with our, in our hundred and twenty days, um, we could have our hearing on either.
So if you go to step two of the checklist, Chris.
Yes, sir.
It says actions two, three must be completed at least fifteen days prior to the public, public meeting.
Yes, sir.
So it's not like, uh, a special public meeting where, you know, five percent of the voters, you know, presented you guys with a petition to hold a special public meeting, it's not, it's nothing like that. It's, you have to, you warn it fifteen days prior to the meeting. And, you know, post it through town and post it on, uh, print medium or electronic media. And so, these are the steps to go through in order to do that. And so, what I might be looking for today is, uh, for you folks to read the plan. And subsequently, hopefully at your next select board meeting, adopt a select board resolution to hold a public hearing on the plan or not, so that would be step three. However, if you've read, admitted to memory the town plan.
How many of you have, have got that memorized, uh, memorized?
I've read it several times.
Yes. It's a good read, I agree.
So, you know, if, if you could do that, read it, come back with any questions.
I thought we had to have it read tonight.
Well, if you read it, then perhaps tonight you could adopt a resolution to hold a public hearing on the plan, if that's something you feel comfortable with doing tonight, you know.
I'd say so moved.
I can't, I can't make that motion.
Well, I just did.
Okay.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so.
Don't have to read it again.
I'm gonna read it again.
We put it on eBooks too, so.
Ooh.
So that being said, then with, all it takes now is to choose a date.
Adopt a resolution, oh, so we voted on whether we have any changes?
No, of the plan.
Right, we decided we don't have any changes?
No, plan.
Okay, so we're gonna adopt a select board resolution?
Yeah, you've just done that.
Okay.
Okay, the next document is the notice of Wood, uh, Town of Woodbury Notice of Public Hearing. And this is the same document which I wordsmithed a little bit, and it meets all the criteria, this state statute. And what has to be posted in media, but also in the town. And this has to be done fifteen days prior, at least fifteen days.
At least fifteen days.
To the twenty second, or to the twenty-sixth?
Prior to when you're going to hold that meeting, it's up to you, you folks went to.
We have to hold the meeting now, you decide when we're gonna hold the meeting.
Decide, so the last piece of paper is a calendar.
That was really good, but I, I got mine already.
So. So it's nothing that you have to do tonight, you know, the, uh.
Well, do you have any suggestions?
Well, my suggestion would be that you should not hold it coincident with a regular select board meeting.
No.
It has to be a standalone meeting.
Okay.
I, I would recommend that it be on a weekend.
We found, to your point, Chris, we found that we had more participation on the Saturday at ten AM than any other month, uh, excuse me, nightly meeting we've ever held.
I can't agree more.
So if we did it on the twenty-third, that would be?
Twenty-third of.
Third.
April.
Of April. I think that that's.
Yeah, because the fire department's not doing theirs now, right?
Right.
So we could take that.
We could take that Saturday, because they're gonna go a different way.
Could.
That doesn't.
Could it possibly be on the sixteenth?
Yeah, I don't know why not, because you're getting really close to your one hundred and sixty day, one hundred and seventy day.
I'll have to look at my calendar to see if anybody is ready to town hall that day. Now you think to bring that with me tonight?
Okay, well.
Okay, well, let's tentative, let's do a tentative.
And the reason why I asked for this.
Recommendation for the sixteenth.
Is because the planning commission meets on the eighteenth.
Even better.
And if we have, uh, final adoption of the town plan by the select board.
On the twenty fifth?
We could, on the sixteenth, we could have a little party.
Select board, select board, well, on the twenty-fifth, Monday, the twenty-fifth.
On what day was this pizza, beer, I gotta put that down.
You promise, Skip?
Yeah, I do.
Where'd that come from?
It was like Michael Saffel pop's up, or is that Michael Gray?
All right, all right, all right.
They're both there.
Oh, right.
On the eighteen, it would have to be the special select board?
No, actually it would be on the s-.
Sixteenth, Saturday, the sixteenth, at ten AM. Would be a special, special meeting.
So, Robin, you and I will get together, if, as long as the town hall is available.
Yeah, I can't, off the top of my head, I can't get anybody right now.
Okay.
Other than that special one that we're gonna do the twenty-third, but that's now canceled.
Yeah.
But I just want to double check.
And once we find out that if that's a good date, then I'll fill in the dates on this document and send it to you folks, so, uh. I think the select board chair should sign this document, once it's, once it's completed.
Once it's completed, yeah.
And you recommend advertising it in three places? Or just?
This is a select board meeting, it's, it's open to the public.
This is a special.
It's a special meeting.
Special meeting.
And it's a publicly worn meeting, so we'll go into two publications, which we, you guys have decided would be the.
Times Argus.
Times Argus and the World. And the Harvard Gazette, so we had three that we had selected.
And I'll post it in town.
And, yeah.
Front porch forum.
Yes.
As, as long as it's on the forum and on the town site.
And.
Gary's and.
And through bulletin boards.
Right, please.
Yeah, yeah, of course, town bulletin boards, so, we'll have this hearing or discussion.
Right.
Then we'll vote on it.
That's correct.
And then we're gonna drink beer and eat pizza.
Monday night.
Oh, Monday night, okay.
You gotta wait till Monday.
I gotta break that down too, because I thought we're gonna get it.
Go home and eat pizza.
You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to wait.
You'll have to let me know what time it's here. It can't be by my.
Just don't fall by my highway.
So, you know, thank you for, uh.
Thanks, Skip, thank you for all the work you've done.
Kind of work.
Tremendous amount of work, we appreciate it.
Very much, very much, you're really, uh.
Well, it's the entire group.
I, I don't think I'm wrong, but, but the last time this much was spent on the town plan was in nineteen eighty-eight. Or something that, like that.
There was a, it was.
It was revised, but the actual town plan as such was, anyway, that's what I've been told, but I don't know, it's been a long time.
It's a long time.
A long time.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Skip. Tremendous.
All right.
All right.
Electing appointed town positions.
Yes.
So I have checked with a bunch of people, and Chuck Batchelor has said he's willing to be reappointed as the road commissioner. Do we need a motion on each of these, or shall we just go through them?
I think we can go through them, but I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
Well, yeah, and, but then you're gonna have some vacancies too, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean.
So we'll have to deal with those too.
Right, well, yeah, but for now, we have the ones that have agreed to be reappointed.
Okay.
Chuck Batchelor as road commissioner, Greg Parkhurst as road foreman, Kim Silk as animal control officer and dangerous building officer and pound keeper.
Pound keeper.
Yeah. Uh, we are gonna have a, an opening on the planning commission, Skip's term is up this year, and he said he's not gonna run again. Zoning Board of Adjustment, we need to make two appointments tonight so that the, uh, Board of Adjustment can have its meeting later, whenever it is soon. Uh, Rick Cannon and Mike McGlynn have both agreed to be reappointed. Chance Payette has chosen not to be reappointed, so we'll have a vacancy there. Conservation Commission, there's one person who's up for reappointment this year, Kylie Briggs, and he's interested in being reappointed. Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission, Michael Gray is willing to be reappointed. Transportation Advisory Committee.
Willing to be reappointed.
Okay, Chris Codius is willing to be reappointed to that, we still don't have a representative.
Oh, that's, that's.
Part of the Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
So Regional, uh, Solid Waste District, we still don't have anyone for that. Gary Clark.
I can do that one as well.
Yeah, oh, great. Okay, so. Central Vermont, Representative Central Vermont Regional, no, Solid Waste Management District, Chris Codius. That's another night of the month, you'll have to be on.
Yeah.
Gary Clark is willing to be reappointed as the first constable. We don't have an energy coordinator. Assistant Town Clerk and Treasurer are up to the Town Clerk and Treasurer to make those appointments. Emergency Management Director, I heard from someone that Chance had resigned, I don't know if that's true, but I heard that, and so.
I, I frankly don't know if.
Yeah, I think Michael mentioned that, but I don't know if it's.
If so, we'd have to talk to somebody from, from the fire crew.
Um, Skip Lindsey, are you willing to continue to be the E nine one one coordinator? Yay.
Wherever you may be.
Yeah, I forgot to ask Jim Schweighelm if he'd want to be reappointed as a tree warden, but. Should we reappoint him anyways?
Yes.
Okay, done. And I didn't contact Rebecca Browning to see if she wanted to continue on the Central Vermont Fiber Board.
Fiber Board, what do they do?
They're, they're the.
Fiber optic?
They're fiber.
Fiber optic people.
Yeah, that's the people who are trying to help us with fiber.
Okay.
So, should I ask her, or should we reappoint her and then ask her later?
Sold.
Huh? Sol?
Well, she's, she's, she's engaged, isn't she?
She's going to the, you mean, yeah. I think she's involved, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Woodbury Fund Committee, Peter Pelz, Grady Neal, Robin Durkey and Norman Etkin.
They should all be reappointed.
And so...
Isn't George Sawyer on there? Did you say George?
No, I didn't say that.
Yeah, he is on there.
He, he was on there, but I thought he had declined.
He has yet to attend a meeting, but he is on there.
I thought he declined.
He happens to have a lot of meetings, so...
I thought he declined. I'm sorry.
No, no, he didn't. He just, he had a workshop that he couldn't attend when we had a meeting, but that was the only thing I heard.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's it.
Do I have a motion to accept everybody that's recognized for recurring or returning to office or to whatever you wanna call a position?
Yeah. Did he move?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you guys wanna write the letters or do you want me to come in and do it?
No, you can do it.
Okay. Take this for you.
So the ones we have left, do you wanna know?
Who are?
Or can she steal your coffee, so she knows what to...
Our vacant, our vacant slots.
Yeah, we, we do, we still need an emergency management director, we need a health officer. I mean, I think we need an emergency management director.
We need to talk to Chance.
Huh?
Right.
What?
We need to talk to Chance.
Yeah, to confirm if he has...
Remember, you still have that letter over there about the health officer that I gave you. Then maybe you can know by April 20th? That would be...
I know, you got me scared.
Oh, did he tell you about that?
What's that? What are you doing now?
If nobody wants, if we can't find a health officer when the chairman of the selectmen is...
What did that happen?
...fall, it's the law.
It's the law.
But there's also the Board of Health, which is basically the select board. So if anything comes up, the Board of Health should be the one that have to really deal with it. There's not that much that comes up, but...
That's one. That one, I had it buried in my pile. You had it in your pile, sir. My pile is...
But I found it.
So this goes back to that, huh?
No, you have to determine who the health officer is gonna be.
We have to decide who the health officer is. It's actually going to be...
It's gonna be a select board.
And if, and if we don't send it back, what happens?
Come on, Skip.
He does have everything else.
Who's that?
It's not fair.
Whoever walks through that door is Sol.
Oh, it is. Uh-oh.
Nope.
No way, no way.
Yeah, that worked out perfectly.
Sit quietly and don't say a word.
And about four other new badges.
Well, you walked right into that.
I was listening to the meeting at home, so, 'cause it looked like you were close to the end, so it's...
Doesn't seem like the things to him.
Okay. So what are we doing with the town officers? Are we putting Kim, Kim Silk down or...
No, we can't put them...
No, no, no.
That's an important job, you can't just suck somebody into it, unless it's Michael, because Michael knows the job already.
Health officer.
Oh, you don't want that, I don't want that.
No.
No, that's why we laughed, because we said the next person who comes in, and there you were.
Actually, literally at the moment.
Magic. So we don't have to, we don't have to fill it out.
Well, I signed it, so you got a signed blank piece of paper.
Thanks.
Technically, the chair of the select...
I've been told that, but I wasn't told, I didn't know about that.
He was just notified of that like two minutes ago.
Just leave it right here for a second, so we can continue to deal with the rest of our business.
The assistance of Jay Copping from Callis is very good, and I think if there's a need for that, that we can...
He'll, he'll advise us, he'll advise whoever we get.
Okay. Alright, so we're done.
So, this happened, well, I just wanted to update whoever that there is a Board of Adjustment hearing that's been set on the, um...
26th.
Flat Street, uh...
Oh, Flat Street.
Flat Street Appeal. And that's on April 6th. Notices have gone out and they were in the paper.
Oh, it says on our minutes, it's the 26th.
That's not the, no, I'm talking about the update for the zoning hearing schedule.
No, that, yes, for the special town meeting, the 26th.
And that's wrong, but that's not what we're talking about. I did make a mistake, yes.
How, how many wrong things do you have?
Yes, one, one was allowed my first, um, my first agenda, so... Steve was the one that pointed out as soon as this went out. No, it wasn't Steve, it was Susan Martin pointed out that Saturday was not the April, Saturday was not April 26th. So it should have been the 23rd. And then when, then Steve let me know that he's not gonna be around on the 23rd and the board didn't check with him before they jumped on that date.
Sorry.
So, okay.
That's the old board's fault.
That's right. So...
Not for the new board. That's Chris's fault. Chris will take responsibility for that one.
When we voted for Stephen to be the moderator for the last special town meeting, is that, we voted for him to continue out the year?
He's, no, he was elected.
That town meeting day.
At town meeting day.
Oh, at town meeting day.
At town meeting day, he was...
So anyways, in order to figure out this, this deal, I checked with Steve Freihoffner to see if maybe he would step in as a moderator temporary. And he was having oral surgery right about that time and he didn't wanna do that. So I checked with Chance and Paul to see if that was gonna be a problem, pushing this ahead a couple weeks for them. And they said they would rather have it on the 7th of May than the 30th of April because they have a fire school that day. So if we go ahead with the 7th of April, um, no, the 7th of May, sorry.
May.
The petition was delivered on February 14th. We have 60 days to act on it, so if we act on it, um, if we sign the warning on March 28th, the, um, warning has to be signed within 60 days. The hearing doesn't have to be set within 60 days. The warning has to be decided. And it has to be warned between no less than 30 or more than 40 days. So, um, if we sign the warning on April 11th, that means the, uh, it would only be 28 days, would be less than 30, that's not. So if we sign the warning on March 28th, which is our next meeting, it'll be pretty, you know, almost 40 day, 40 days, depending on how you count the days, you know, as they occur. So I, I would suggest that on March 28th, at our next meeting, we should sign the warning and it should be for May 7th, Saturday morning. Who usually checks with the school to see whether that's...
Uh, that'd be Chris.
You're gonna do that, okay. So make sure that's available at 10 o'clock Saturday morning, May 7th.
This room?
No, the school.
No, the gym. Use the gym.
This is the meeting for the fire department's new building.
The big fire department discussion. There's gonna be well attended.
No.
Wait.
No, the zoning hearing was just for the, um, the 6th of April. There's nothing on the 23rd anymore. Plan, town plan hearing on the 16th. My goodness.
Wait a minute, so the, so May 7th is the showdown with the...
Fire department.
Mm-hmm.
And you're gonna be back?
Yes.
Ready to go?
I'll be ready. Ready or not, I'll be there.
Great, thank you.
Do we, are we really saying showdown?
Not in the minutes.
Not in the minutes, but it's a discussion about the, the, is, are we making, taking formal action on it or are we just, is it a public hearing?
It's the voters, it's a special meeting and people are gonna vote with either their hands or their paper ballots or something like that.
And will anything go out in advance of that?
Oh, gosh, yes. I'm sure the fire department has a lot of stuff, they've got a video, they've probably got... I don't think we have to have a pre-town, pre-meeting because this is gonna be an open meeting, so people can ask all their questions in that meeting before they vote. So it'll probably be a couple hours. But the, I'm sure the fire department's gonna put some...
There's plenty of stuff out there, which is good. We can echo that in some way if we want to. We're supposed to be, you know, indifferent to this, so it's...
But it's the voter's choice, yeah.
Voter's choice.
So, Robin, you did the warning on the last special meeting, can you do this one up?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have it ready to sign on the 28th?
Yes.
Thanks, Ms. Turkey.
Wait, we're signing the warning?
The warning that's gonna say this article has been submitted by petition and whatever, what, what the article says and then we'll put the date and the time and all the wherefores and wherazins and sign it and go in the paper.
So just to, it, it, in the May 7th meeting, is it gonna be a public hearing and a formal vote?
No, it's a pub, it's a meeting, it's a special town meeting and, which will end in a vote.
In a vote.
Yeah.
It's just like when you do your regular town meeting and you're voting on an article, you have your discussion and then you vote.
No, I'm just thinking about the, uh, uh, and I'm not, well, it's, I'm sure it will sound like, um, um, but this whole fire station has had a curious history in terms of locating it, um, funding it. As I understand, Callis is not expected to pay anything to this even though we cover them?
I'm sure that'll come up at the meeting.
I'm sure that will come up.
But they've decided, yeah, they've got a good explanation for, answer for that.
And the last time I heard, it's 1.3?
It's going up, it's, it's, it's going up.
$85,000 a year for 20 years.
For 20 years.
So, yeah, lots of questions.
Just focus on the piece like the pizza and beer.
Oh, that will help?
Do you have enough beer or what?
When you say anything, this is crazy overall.
No, this is, this is a big one.
It's huge.
It is.
Which is why we've been working on this for quite a while.
It didn't pass, yeah.
It didn't pass before. It hasn't passed, and so this is why we're taking a different approach.
And this, uh, I mean, they were given this land, which is really a big bonus. Um, I assume they, I don't know what kind of money they used to clear the lot, but they've got the lot cleared